Thank you. Welcome to the February 21st, 2024 Lower Marion Board of Commissioners meeting. Before we start, please silence your cellphones. Amplifying equipment is available for those having difficulty hearing during the meeting, and the room is also equipped with telecoil technology. When the floor is open for public comment, comment will first be taken from those present in the room, and then from those attending virtually. Please introduce yourself and about where you live in the township before beginning your comments. Will the February 21st, 2024 meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Lower Marion please come to order? All rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under thy, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Mr. Rossman and Mr. Sinai have asked to be excused. Mr. Bernheim.
Present.
Mr. Churchill.
Here.
Mr. Courtney.
Here.
Ms. Epstein.
Present.
Mr. Gabbard.
Present.
Mr. Grimes.
Here.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Here.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson.
Present.
Mr. Whalen.
Here.
Mr. Woodring.
Here.
Mr. Zellout.
Here.
Madam Vice President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the biannual reorganization meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on January 2nd, 2024, and a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on January 17th, 2024 as distributed. Thank you, Commissioner Gavin. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Madam Secretary, that's unanimous. I have several announcements. The Board met in executive session on February 7th and earlier this evening regarding the following matters: billboard litigation, zoning hearing board appeal litigation, and personnel matters. We now come to public privilege of the floor. This is the section of our meeting where members of the public may address the Board on any non-agenda items or any other public matters in which the township has jurisdiction or authority. Please state your name prior to addressing the Board and keep comments to three minutes or less. If there's a group of people in attendance who are speaking on the same topic, we ask that a spokesperson be selected to address the Board and that they keep their comments to five minutes or less. Please note that comments will first be taken from those present in the room and then from those attending virtually. Please use the podium to my right and speak directly into the microphone. For those on Zoom, please raise your virtual hand if you'd like to speak during public comment opportunities. Also, if you're making comments, be aware that the Board and when appropriate, staff will respond to comments and questions after all public comment. And now I'd like to call for any attendees that are in the room who'd like to make comment to push the podium.
Good evening. My name is Tracee Uyiti. This is. Lisa Frasaro. We live in Belmont Hills, and we represent the Belmont Hills Civic Association. Just a few days ago, we would have been standing here sharing the concerns of our community involving the Belmont Hills Fire Company, but in a short amount of time, the Commissioners, the Township staff, and members of the fire company worked together to implement a plan to rebuild the leadership to move forward. Today, we would like to give our heartfelt thanks to those who made this possible. The Belmont Hills community is looking forward to having our first-class fire company back to what it once was, so we thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christina Chang, and I reside in Penn Valley. Earlier this week, I shared a presentation with all of the Commissioners regarding a policy that was implemented by Lower Marion School District regarding transportation. And so I believe you all have the background, and I thank Commissioner Bernheim, Grimes, Stevenson, Kramer, Rossman, Woodring, and Zellout for providing some preliminary feedback. The reason why I'm here today while this is a school district matter is that while there are jurisdictional boundaries between the school district and the township, the topic of safety, the topic of traffic, and parking are important to the entire community. The school district has informed us that 500 students from Lower Marion High School will be losing transportation starting September 2024. So if we are already aware of the congestion around Lower Marion School District today, it's going to be far worse starting next year, especially as start times will change from 7:30 for high school students to 8:30. The normal work traffic plus students walking and driving will create safety concerns. Our township strives to be a first-class township, and we want to create safe and walkable neighborhoods, but our infrastructure really is lacking in certain areas. So I'm here today to make some certain asks of all of you. We believe that PennDOT studies are warranted for the entire walk zone. It's a little unclear whether it's strictly the school district making these requests, community members. My ask is whether the Board of Commissioners has any authority or influence to help accelerate these PennDOT studies. We have information from the traffic supervisor of the Lower Marion Police Department has provided us some pedestrian accident reports along Montgomery Avenue. A parent in our community downloaded all of the PennDOT crash reports from 2018 through 2022 and plotted it on maps that you might have seen in the presentation. And we all know that Lancaster Avenue, East Wynwood, Penn Road, Church, Montgomery Avenue, there is a history of vehicular and pedestrian accidents. We're not sure when the last formal PennDOT studies occurred, but we believe that once these studies take place, that there will be hazardous walking routes deemed in this community around Lower Marion High School. We also understand that the township has worked very hard on sidewalk infrastructure plans in the community, and these sidewalks that are identified were identified before this walk zone was announced. And while Morris Road might be one of the sidewalks identified as high-risk areas, that street is also losing bus transportation. So our ask is, is there an opportunity to revisit the important sidewalks?
Thank you, Ms. Chang. I'm sorry to cut you off, but if you could just wrap up your comments.
All right. I've sent you my presentation. If you have any questions, please reach out, and we would like to work together with the Board of Commissioners and the school district to find ways to ensure safety for our students. Thank you.
Good evening. Craig Timberlake from Ardmore. Sorry. So I want to echo a lot of what the last speaker mentioned, although I'm coming at it from a slightly different perspective. So my kids walk to school every day they have for their entire high school career. I currently have a sophomore and a recent graduate from last year. And I would just urge you to do whatever you can to improve pedestrian safety infrastructure in the township. While I have nothing but respect for what the last speaker said, I would add that I think at this point, no further studies are done. We all know where the -- sorry, no further studies are needed. We know where the dangerous areas are, and I think we just need to do it. We just need to fix it. So I thank you for your time and for your attention to this very urgent and important matter. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Matthew Gold. I live in the Short Ridge section of Wynwood. I do want to address the importance of PennDOT safety studies, which are required for the school to make changes in these walk zones. Some students are going to be forced to walk 35 to 40 minutes across very dangerous streets, and the impacts of the township are not just what others have mentioned, but also relate to the payment of crossing guards, which from what I understand is a cost that's shared between the township and the school district that we need to think about. The extension of a left-turn timing light into the LMHS parking lot to ease congestion. We're concerned about the increase of traffic in the neighborhoods surrounding the high school and parking, students who may be parking there in those spaces. That will affect the people in those neighborhoods. Those of us who live in areas without sidewalks, which are many, many of these routes do encompass areas that not just cross hazardous roadways, but that involve streets that don't have sidewalks, are worried about the congestion and dangers of our kids. We also would ask you to consider advocating for SEPTA transit in any way to align the Bus 44 schedules with the new school schedules, and to think about how the township policing, traffic, and safety of our kids will be affected by this decision. Thank you.
Thomas Crookham, Ardmore, Ward 8. I'm actually here to ask for the support of a board of the Board for something that is very low effort, is zero cost to Lower Marion Township, does not raise taxes for any Pennsylvania resident, but adds freedom of choice and opportunity for Lower Marion Township residents. Currently, community solar is not allowed in Pennsylvania, so I'm simply asking if the Board of Commissioners would send a message of support to Harrisburg for the pending HB House Bill 1842 that's in front of the legislature at this time. This bill simply creates a regulatory framework that allows for community solar to happen. We need community solar so that entities such as corporations or municipalities or nonprofits can set up a solar project and then sell shares to interested parties and citizens to generate clean and affordable electricity. In Lower Marion, we often have architecture, geography, or tree cover that prevents individual residents from installing solar directly, so this would just give residents another choice. And again, it adds no taxes or costs to the township, and I think the support of a respected township such as Lower Marion would add some weight behind the bill, and so I'm asking you to send that a message, a letter to support HB 1842. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kim Lebetz, and I live in Norbert, on the Lower Marion part of Norbert. I wanted to thank all of the Commissioners for being very responsive to probably the hundreds of parents who have contacted you in the past three or four weeks. We really appreciate the responsiveness. My Commissioner, Mr. Sinai, is not here tonight. He was very responsive and helpful. I said to him, "We know that this is not your baby, but we all are bathing in the same bath water." And so I guess, and feel free to dumb it down as much as you want, I am very confused with the intersection between the township and the district in terms of who's responsible for what. Safety has not been made clear by the school district that, let's say, we need a light made no turn on red, like for instance, where Williams meets Wynwood, that's the new -- there's a new part of the new walk zone. So that's a right turn on red. You might have 100 kids walking there. Who's responsible for that? And similarly, going under the Norbert Bridge, all of these areas are brand-new walk zones with over 500-plus kids, probably 90% of them wearing earbuds. So my -- you don't need to answer. You can email me, but so I'm just really confused over who's in charge with what safety-wise, so any clarification would help.
Good evening. My name is Marion Williams. I live in Ballackinwood. I'm here to ask about tree canopy in the township. I'm aware that tree canopy has decreased drastically. I see it in my neighborhood, and we're doing our best to assist with planting trees, but I learned recently that there are certain nuisance weeds and vines that are actually prohibited in the township. So I was thrilled to learn this. Some of them you will recognize the names maybe if you happen to be gardeners: goutweed, porcelainberry, English ivy. That's a big one. Chinese wisteria, that's very popular. So I actually have a copy of the ordinance here, and it says that it is hereby declared to be unlawful for any landowner or occupant to propagate or allow to grow or maintain some of those things that I just named. It also says that the township is authorized to issue a notice of violation served by regular mail. The notice shall require the landowner within 30 days of the date of the notice to remove the nuisance plant. So I bring this up because I've lived in the township for about 12 years now. Ivy growing on trees just in my neighborhood is a very, very big issue. It is very important to remove the ivy to preserve the tree canopy that exists. You can't plant enough trees to replace what will be lost if we don't take care of the trees that currently exist. So I would like to understand what program the township has in place, or which department is responsible, or who should be monitoring this or enforcing this prohibition. I'm often told that there's a shade tree commission. I have never once received any communications from the shade tree commission. The shade tree commission does not have a Facebook page, as do many township, some township departments, and so there's no communication coming from them. Perhaps that is something that they might work on to help educate township residents, to help provide trainings for how to remove ivy from your trees. It's a big issue. You can walk, you know, around one block in your neighborhood and see the problem. And that's only one noxious weed, but it's a big one. So I would just like to have your support whether you speak to the shade tree commission or whoever it is. I'd like to understand how this is supposed to work.
Good evening. Oshelaza, Marion Station. Dear Board of Commissioners, six years ago, several of your Board of Commissioners requested the FOMA to join the Shade Tree Commission and serve on the commission. Before joining, I read the code. I discussed the Shade Tree Commission's role and opportunities. I accepted my appointment with the assumption and the goal based on the code and those discussions to support a better tree care management and provide educational outreach. In my work for Pennsylvania's Urban and Community Forestry, I assist municipalities to improve tree canopy management, help climate adaptation, and increase tree canopy benefits for all. Though the Shade Tree Commission's role is defined by the state code, local codes, and how those codes are applied vary. There are great examples of collaboration between Shade Tree Commissions and municipal staff throughout our region. Tree commissions treat itself partners by municipal staff and commissioners, do educational outreach, apply for grants, they update species lists, update code, and do a million other things that support their municipalities. Sadly, the role of our Shade Tree Commission has been reduced to optics only. We are not allowed to perform any of the above-listed tasks done by other Shade Tree Commissions elsewhere. I have spoken up before, asking you to clarify the Shade Tree Commission's role as requested in the Shade Tree Commission's annual report, and ask for improved communication. The Shade Tree Commission, though appointed by the Board of Commissioners, is not assigned to any committee and has no direct communication with the Board of Commissioners at all. I'm taking this opportunity, and I provided a summary of the state of our tree canopy attached to my email that I sent to you earlier this evening. This summary shows the severity of our tree canopy over the past several decades, and has not been serious changes in operations to address those changes. The Shade Tree Commission's considerable technical expertise is not utilized. My question is, how does the Shade Tree Commission, that is prevented from performing its code-defined duties, benefit the township? Because the change in the role of the Shade Tree Commission, the lack of support for its work, the lack of adherence to the township code, and the lack of open, honest discussion to solve issues in the township, I have decided to resign from the Shade Tree Commission and will serve my time elsewhere. Finally, Andy Stanley said, "Leaders who don't listen will eventually be surrounded by people who don't have anything to say." I would like to thank the Board for the opportunity to serve, and especially Rich Whitman, the Shade Tree Commission Chair, for his patience and many years of serving. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members?
Hi. My name's Chuck Cutler. I live in Marion. I had asked Ms. Kelly to send out some correspondence, and I think she did, to all of you. I've been on a bit of a rant for the last six years about safety, safety for our children at the Belmont Hills pool, and although I've been reassured that it's been looked into, I took my grandson to that pool often this summer. He was two years old. It was a tot pool. It's 12 inches or 18 inches deep. I never saw a lifeguard there, and I'm sure the kids all thought, the lifeguards all thought, "Well, the parents are hovering over their children. They're watching their children." But, you know, a parent may be watching two kids turn his or her head, and that's when the child falls. Frequently, adolescents came out of the deeper pool, third or fourth grade, ran through the pool. They were having a good time. They could easily knock over a small child. That child could fall back, hit his or her head on the concrete, something terrible. How do we have a pool with no lifeguards? The kids are not bad kids. This is not about the lifeguards. It is about the lack of adult supervision at the pool. I think we have a workflow problem. The kids are all real, the lifeguards are all real busy during the 1 to 4 o'clock time, and then people start to leave. There are a bunch of lifeguards sitting around. They're teenagers. The hormones are raging. They decide to have a catch, throw a frisbee. An 18-year-old can really accelerate the speed of that frisbee. It goes off track, hits somebody in the nose, the teeth, the jaw, the eye. There could be some serious lifelong damage from that, and the kids don't get it. We need an adult thinking about this. I saw the frisbee go up on the roof of the locker room, and one of the lifeguards went up there. This is not to blame the kids, but how do you go on the roof with sandals or no shoes? You're 18 years old. There's a loose shingle. You fall over, hit your head. There's all sorts of problems at that pool. It's been going on for six or seven years, maybe longer, and we really need the adults to start to think about it. And I'm afraid, in conclusion, that the folks that we've hired to run the pool just don't get it. So please look at my emails. They've been going on for a long time, and I just see the problems going on and on and on, and something terrible is going to happen to a child, and it really breaks my heart to think about it and to know that we're not doing all we can for public safety at the pool. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, Tracee Uyiti, Belmont Hills. So I just want to tag on to him. I actually sent a letter to the Commissioners this summer. I had a conversation with Ernie about the dangerous situations at the pool and how there's no lack of adult supervision, and I was told that 20-year-old college kids are adults enough to be there. I've seen horseplay. I've seen kids pushing other lifeguards in the pool, and it's just not okay. Somebody's going to get hurt, and at what extent are we going to continue to let this occur and not do something about it? So I wrap on to him and say that there actually has to be a grown-up, not a 20-year-old college student there 24/7 while the pool's operating. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jill Fordry, and I live in Ballackinwood. When the idea of municipal zoning was originally contemplated over 100 years ago, the primary purpose of zoning was to protect public health, safety, welfare by separating incompatible uses from each other. That is the first page on the Lower Marion zoning webpage, the first paragraph, sorry. The actual zoning code goes further: "to promote the public health, safety, convenience, comfort, amenities, prosperity, and general welfare of the township, including without limitation, protection of the environment." My neighborhood is zoned LDR4, a low-density district intended for detached, single-family residential homes and the preservation of existing neighborhood character. However, I would like to open a business on my property. As a byproduct, I will be emitting carbon dioxide, nitrogen oxide, particular matter, benzene, formaldehyde, and other cancer-causing chemicals. I will also be releasing herbicides, fungicides, pesticides, fecal matter, and metals, including lead, into the air. But mostly, these affect people with asthma, the elderly, children. I hope living a block away from an elementary school won't hurt my chances of a zoning variance. I will also be producing noise at a frequency that allows loud sound at harmful levels to travel over long distances and readily penetrate walls and windows. I do realize that this can generate a host of negative health impacts, and it will also drown out the children's playful voices during recess. The township doesn't have any industrial zones for me to locate my business. There is light industrial, but the code states that my business can't have a detrimental impact on the quality of life of residents in terms of air pollution and noise. Do you think I should be granted a zoning use variance? In fact, I don't need one. My business is landscaping. I'm allowed to do all of that. You would not allow a manufacturing plant to set up in my neighborhood, but for much of the year, we are exposed to an equivalent level of noise and air pollution numerous times a week, including Saturday and Sunday. Our quality of life is directly affected by this, and I'm not sure we would have bought our house here in two and a half years ago if we had known this. No Lower Marion zoning No Lower Marion zoning district allows for this level of air pollution, and the township should be ashamed of the landscaping exemption on excessive noise. The Board of Commissioners, and again, I quote, "finds that it is necessary to provide for the control and regulation of air pollution and air pollution nuances caused by the emissions or escape of smoke, fumes, noxious odors, and gases." There are solutions to this problem. They're out there. And I hope the Commission will look to the future and address them.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Madam Secretary, anybody online?
I have one person online. They're...
Oh, they just raised their hand. Okay.
I'm going to promote Ethan Frank to the...
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you, I presume, Evan.
I'm sorry, could you please speak up? You're hard to hear. Hi, you're hard to hear.
My name's Ethan from Marion Station, and I just want to talk to you about a recent report on lane widths from Johns Hopkins that I enjoyed. So, first, imagine a highway, wide lanes, broad shoulders. You drift off the road. That's not a problem. They designed it to forgive these mishaps. This known as forgiving design. Extremely smart, saved probably millions of lives.
Mr. Frank, I'm sorry to interrupt you. You're still, you're still hard to hear, and we really want to hear what you're saying. Could you speak up or turn up your audio?
I'll try getting real close to the computer. How's this? Can you hear me now?
Not really.
Barely.
Barely.
Huh. That is odd.
How about now?
That's much better.
There we go. Okay. So, highways...
I think we might have lost him. I can actually see it. Yeah, he was frozen. Mr. Frank, we seem to have lost you. Oh, there he is.
Yeah, extremely strange. This is the...
So, I'll skip ahead a little bit, in the interest of time. In a town, no, this doesn't work because people are distracted when they drive, and so they go at the speed that feels comfortable. Wide lanes make people feel comfortable, and so they drive...
Frank, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We're having trouble on our end with the audio and hearing you clearly.
That's very funny. Well, this is why I sent this speech in my email as well. Can you hear me now?
No, there's too much. We did receive your email. Thank you.
Excellent. I recommend taking a look at the links in that email. The Johns Hopkins Report is a great website with great visualizations and lots of good information on how narrow lanes, tons of benefits. Should I stop now because the audio's not working?
Yes, sir. Yes, please.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry for the troubles.
Thank you. Right now, we'll turn to any Commissioners that would like to respond to public privilege. I would just like to first, again, thank the members of the Belmont Hills Civic for coming out in support of Commissioner Bernheim and Commissioner, and Manager McNeely, Chief McCoy, and Commissioner Woodring for the great work that they did in resolving the issues of the Belmont Hills Fire Company. Thank you, thank you all very much for the work that you've done. Commissioner Grimes. Meeting's over.
She's heard me before. So, thank, thank you. I'd like to just talk about, about two subjects. The first is the expanded school zones. And I thank everyone who came out on every topic and that one in particular. To answer the question that someone asked, the township has a responsibility for safety of our residents, as does the school district, and that includes every resident, including students. I'll speak for myself, but maybe others. I, in this case, I found out about the expanded school zones when they were announced, and I suspect that some others did on this board as well. Having said that, when we learned that the expanded school zones were, that decision had been made by the school district, and that is their decision to make because they are an independent governing body, we reached out to the school district, and we have started a, working with them, a conversation and working with them to address the issues that many residents have contacted, many, probably every Commissioner around this table about whether we, whether we represent a walk zone or not. Those are issues about the, the traffic concerns, about pickup and drop-off, about certain areas that residents feel are challenging in terms of walking. You've all said them, so you know what the issues are. I feel confident, first of all, I feel confident that the school district wants to work with us on it. We have our, our traffic safety unit has been working with us, our building and planning department, and we are going to do the best that we can to address these things in conjunction with the school district that so far, I think, has been cooperative and understands that their decision has ramifications. The one other thing on this subject I want to mention, the gentleman who talked about SEPTA. I agree with you, SEPTA could play a role. SEPTA is very challenging for us. As some residents may know, SEPTA has decided to discontinue service to parts of our township, which I feel is a very unwise decision, an unenvironmentally friendly decision. I would suggest that in addition to talking to us, that you address that with your state representatives who have some more oversight over SEPTA than we do. Very briefly, switching gears, to those who are here for Belmont Hills Fire, I thank you for coming. I represent a ward that has primary coverage, part of my ward, part of, in Penn Valley, gets primary coverage of Belmont Hills Fire. I am very pleased that the fire company leadership has been reinvigorated, and I look forward as to my residents to the fire company continuing its long record of service to the township. So, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Grimes. Any other Commissioners like to respond? Mr. Courtney?
Thank you, President Kramer, Vice President, promoted. I wanted to thank the gentleman who talked about community solar. It's a great opportunity for our township. It would be something nice to be able to offer. Members of the Sustainability Committee were discussing that very topic with our Sustainability Manager this morning, and it is our intention to bring that to the Board in our next public meeting in two weeks. The other item I wanted to address was the concerns about landscaping equipment. 100% agree, we should not be allowing these noisy, polluting devices everywhere, and I say that as someone who's a landscaper, refuses to change. That being said, there is an ordinance underway with regard to leaf blowers at least, and potentially more electric lawn equipment, and the goal is to bring that forward to the Board this year, hopefully the first half of the year, but our Sustainability Manager keeps hedging on me on that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Courtney. Commissioner Kramer?
I'd like to respond to Marion Williams' concern, and particularly as to the issue of English ivy. I've also recently researched the issue of English ivy because I've had it on my property for almost, for the entire time we've lived there, and it is deeply embedded in the roots of some of our private hedge, and you can't remove it without tearing out your hedges. We've looked, I've had our landscaper remove it from any area near any tree, and all the way around the roots of everywhere where it could possibly grow onto a tree. And I think that our residents need to understand the danger that English ivy presents to trees. I agree with you, Marion, and we live in the same neighborhood, and I walk around and I, I look at every tree. I can walk around the block, and I can see at least eight or 10 trees that are probably going to die because of the English ivy and/or fall because of it when in a bad storm. And I think that our residents need to take care of their own trees. These are trees that are on their properties. And I made a point in my most recent newsletter of highlighting this, and I would suggest that perhaps our public information officer could put out information to the community about the risks to trees of damaging them, and the risk that they could fall during the storm, and the risk that they, they can be, that the English ivy can kill the trees. Because I think that this is something that our neighbors really do need to know about and really need to take care of. So, thank you for bringing that issue up.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer, Commissioner Zelloff and Bernie.
Thanks, Vice President Kramer. To add, regarding tree, the tree canopy was such a defining characteristic of the township. We are a very fortunate township in that we have an arborist. Most townships don't have an arborist. The arborist can be contacted directly, and it's contact information's on the website. We are looking, according to the arborist and according to the Shade Tree Commission, to homeowners who want township trees planted in the right-of-way, so that's the first several feet of your property. Township, if there's space or a tree's been removed, township will plant a tree in your right-of-way at no cost. And if there's a tree dying on your property in the right-of-way, the township will remove it and replace it. There is, on the email news blast that comes out from the township, there is information about the Shade Tree Commission. Their meetings are open to the public. But there's probably more we can do to, to communicate about the good work that is done by the Shade Tree Commission and the township arborist. Also, according to our manager, is a link on the township website. If you want that tree planted in the right-of-way on your property, it's very easy to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zelloff. Commissioner Bernheim?
Thank you very much, Vice President Kramer. My guess is that everybody in the Board here would probably feel compelled to respond to everybody that came forth on each of these topics, so I'm going to do my very best not to be redundant from that, which has already been stated, including my desire to ask somebody not to resign from the Trade Tree Commission, because there are certain, certain improvements there, no doubt, but other items that have been addressed. But the two topics that I did want to just focus on ever so briefly is, one, in connection with the walk zones, and Christina Tang, thank you for all of your hard work, and I know there are many others, and I apologize for not recognizing them as well, but coming forth. But then, just to echo what Commissioner Grimes stated as the Chair of our Intergovernmental Relations Committee, is that this Board and the School Board, albeit we have jurisdictional boundaries, are working together on this because this has too many overlaps, that we need to coordinate with one another, you know, what is taking place. And hopefully, you know, that, from the meetings which have already started, that will improve some of the proposals that we all have been looking at. And then, next, I just wanted to also echo thanks to the Belmont Hills community for not just coming forth this evening, but a lot of the concerns that they have expressed. And I'm going to piggyback on the acknowledgement, really, of, I see our Chief McCoy was here, our manager, Ernie McNeely, and Belmont Hills' new Commissioner, Commissioner Woodring, who worked hard with, with the community and the fire, fire company, and recognizing their almost 100 years' experience of serving this township, and it should be acknowledged, all of those that have served in the past, as well as those who are going to serve in the future. We acknowledge and appreciate all of them and look forward to making sure that, you know, Belmont Hills continues to be a major contributor to the Lower Marion Fire Service, which is made up of six separate fire companies that all interwad with one another, as well as with not just the Belmont Hills community, but the township as a whole. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernheim. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Woodring?
Thank you, Vice President Kramer. I too want to thank the Belmont Hills community for coming out. My wife and I, we moved to the area roughly a little over five years ago, and the reason why we moved to Belmont Hills was really for a sense of community, and it's very evident that the fire company there is the very fabric that keeps the community together. And so, I'm glad to see that we're on a path forward where that generational tradition can continue and be very successful. And I, another thank you just for, you know, the warm welcomes we've received ever since we joined the community from the Civic Association, from our immediate neighbors, and, you know, we couldn't be happier to be in Belmont Hills. And so, thank you for all of that and all of your hard work. Appreciate it. And I do also want to say, I echo the concerns about the Belmont Hills Pool. You know, my family has commented several times that there is no higher supervision. As we've seen, some things go, rules have been broken, let's just put it that way. So, would be interested in continuing that conversation and see what we can do to kind of, you know, justify that situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Woodring. Commissioner Churchill?
Thank you. Just to make a short comment about expanded school zones, I think I, like most citizens, didn't hear about it until whenever. And I learned tonight, I could be wrong with this, that the reason that there is expanded school zone is that there are not enough bus drivers to resolve the problem. And it would seem to me that those people who are interested in this should find out from the school district, how many buses do they need and how much money, how much additional money they would need to hire drivers? And it would seem to me that it would solve, resolve a lot of, you know, ill feeling that, you know, parents have sending their kids off to, who are affected by these walk zones. So, talk to the School Board about that, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Churchill. Any other Commissioners? All right.
I'm used to it.
Well, now move to the public comments section of the meeting. This is the section of our meeting where members of the public may address the Board on any agenda items. The same rules apply as previously stated for public privilege of the floor. Comments regarding the ordinance to amend Chapter A180 should be held until the public hearing later in the meeting. Would any residents and attendees in the, come on up?
Hello, Thomas Crookham, Ardmore Ward 8. I wanted to comment on, I think it's 9A, the approval to amend the equipment fund asset replacement purchases list. I actually attended the Finance Committee meeting on February 7th and listened to the debate on the purchase of the electric vehicles. I was actually hoping to support the purchase of both those vehicles at that meeting, but there actually wasn't a public comment period at that meeting, so I'm here today to do that, and I hope that the, the Board will strongly reconsider that amendment and will reject the amendment to remove vehicle number 4004 and actually approve the purchase of both electric vehicles. I feel like the green premium of about $6,000 over eight years that's listed in the reporting is a fairly minor or small expense in the scheme of things, and every time the township adds another vehicle, an ICE vehicle, internal combustion engine vehicle to the fleet, it's just eight to 10 to 12 years more of greenhouse gas emissions. I was rather surprised to hear that the Board didn't take the recommendation of staff, and so I urge you to purchase electric vehicles whenever possible, if it, if it meets the needs of the requirements of the vehicle, and I urge you to purchase both vehicles and reject the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room who'd like to speak? Madam Secretary? Anyone online?
No one online, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Would any Commissioners like to respond to public comment? All right. We now move on to the consent calendar. Would any Commissioner like to remove any item from the consent calendar? Mr. Kramer?
Yes, I would like to remove item J from it so that I may abstain.
I'm sorry.
I'd have to abstain from the whole thing. I can just abstain for, all right, fine, then it's not...
I can just abstain for, all right, fine, then it's not necessary that we...
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I will also note that we are removing item G, Authorization to Advertise the Noise Amendments Ordinance, so that it can be referred back to the VMP Committee. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended. I have a second. Mr. Gavin? All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call, sorry. Mr. Bernheim?
Aye.
Mr. Churchill?
Aye.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Ms. Epstein?
Aye.
Mr. Gavin?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. S. Cream?
Yes.
Ms. G. Cream?
Yes, except that I abstain as to item J.
Thank you. Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Whelan?
Yes.
Mr. Woodring?
Aye.
Mr. Zellout?
Aye.
The consent calendar is duly adopted. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Moving on to the Building and Planning Committee. We've removed item G from consent. What do I do here? Do I move to page 26? No. Do I have to do that again?
Make a motion to refer it to committee.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we refer the noise, refer item G back to committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Courtney. All in favor?
Any discussion?
Any discussion? Sorry. Any discussion? Any public comment?
No.
Great. All in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries. All other items are on consent calendar. Moving on to Finance Committee. What do I do here?
This is, this is your amendment.
Okay.
Somebody needs to make a motion if it's going to go.
Okay. Moving on to approve the amendment, to approve, to, I'll make a motion to approve to the amendment of the equipment fund. Yes? Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Gavin. Any discussion?
What page are we on?
Commissioner Courtney, we are on page 44.
All right, so I forwarded along an email from President Sinai, and I have his work up here on the screen, so that people can follow along at home. And I will do my best to impersonate and explain. So, what we have here is a comparison of the costs of a Ford Explorer to the cost of a Nissan Leaf. That's sort of the middle two tables. On the right, I highlighted in blue where the Leaf clearly comes out ahead, in terms of mitigation cost. So, as you look at the rows, it's comparing the potential resale price of the cars at 0% of original value, 25% of original value, 50%. Anything over 50% of original value, the Leaf comes out ahead, in terms of the resale value and in the, of like, cost. So, that's why it's up to 50%. The columns are average mileage over eight years. So, when we were talking a couple weeks ago, I believe we were looking at 1,700 miles a year, which is really the worst-case scenario of usage for these vehicles. In all likelihood, an electric vehicle would be prioritized in its usage, and would be more likely to do around 5,600, 5,000 miles annually. So, the net-net here is the bold text that I copied from the summary that President Sinai provided. If we are able to get 50% resale on an electric vehicle, the electric vehicle is less expensive over the lifetime. I know we don't take Google's word for it, but when Googled last time we spoke, you were able to get a 10-year-old Leaf at more than 50% of its original cost. All right. The other potential option here is, let's say it only holds 25% of the resale value, as long as the vehicle is driven an average number of miles approaching that 5,600, then you will also cover the social cost of carbon. That is my quick explanation. So, I hope that this clarifies some of the questions that we had last week around, is the, how the EV compares to ICE. Basically, you can either say resale value is going to be decent at 50% or more, and the Leaf comes out ahead. Or, we're going to drive at 5,600 miles a year, and get at least 25%, and the Leaf comes out ahead. So, that is the analytical argument. I will shift now, briefly, to my own words, somewhat less analytical. I'm, I was a little bit perplexed a couple weeks ago that we were still debating this, because I thought, a year ago, when this came up, and the green premium was even higher, yet we still supported it, we had made sort of a clear policy choice, as a board, to persist in what we say is our stated direction of electric vehicle transition. And my concern is not over this one specific car. My concern is more, what does it mean to balk at this point? This is a potential $6,000, I think. $6,000 compared to our $75 million budget is .008%. And yet, we're talking $6,000 over the course of eight years. We have previously stated, one, a goal of reducing our carbon emissions over the next decade, two decades. And we have directed staff, both through our Sustainability Plan priorities, and through the Board's Priorities Workshop, that we want staff to pursue a migration to electric vehicles as much as possible. In the five years that I have witnessed or been a part of the vehicle fleet discussion, only twice have I seen real contentious debate, and it's only over electric vehicles. It's surprising to me that we would put this much scrutiny on these vehicles at this time, and particularly at such low costs. I suspect that the time taken to prepare the memo, and for our staff to prepare for the meeting, was probably more expensive than $6,000 at this point. So, that being said, I hope that we will not move forward with this amendment, because I don't want us to be giving an unclear direction of what our policy is, and what we want to do moving forward. I don't want to say to staff, "No, we don't actually want to move forward with electric vehicles unless we will make a profit off of it." I don't want our policy to become that we will only pursue environmental sustainability if the price is right. If we balk at this point, there will be much bigger challenges ahead, especially if we balk, given the amount of general fund balance that we carry year over year, well above, I'll just repeat this refrain ever, well above our stated policy goal of 15% to 18%. We have $30 million in the bank, and we are scrutinizing electric vehicles to a level that we don't scrutinize anything else in the budget, over $6,000. I'll wrap it up here. When our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren ask us what we did about environmental sustainability, I don't want to tell a story about a cost-benefit analysis, and how the return on investment wasn't there, so we decided we weren't going to spend $6,000, even though we had $30 million in the bank. I want us to tell a story that we made difficult decisions. I want us to tell a story that, when we were blessed with so much resources, we made the right choices. We continued on this path. I don't want us taking a step back. So, I urge all of you tonight, please reject this amendment. Let's continue with the priorities laid out in our Sustainability Plan. Let's respect the recommendation of our staff in doing this. And let's continue to give clear direction, that we want electric vehicle migration, and that we want to pursue environmental sustainability in this township.
Thank you, Commissioner Courtney. Any other commissioners? Mr. Epstein?
I'll say it a lot quicker, everything he says, but also, the burden of proof that anything that is sustainable, or an electric vehicle in particular, has to be profitable is unfair. And it also, I think, goes against what we've said many times as a board, that we are trying to move towards sustainability. We're going to pay eventually for carbon. We could pay a little bit now, it's really a little bit relatively, or we're going to pay a lot later. I really appreciate all of the data we've looked at, but I'll be honest, I don't want to spend more hours, like, going dollar-for-dollar on electric vehicles. I think we either, it's not cost prohibitive, we either support them, or we don't. And I really hope, as a township, I've heard so many people are supporting green, just green initiatives that benefit everyone and really don't have a downside. And so, I hope we don't support this amendment as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Epstein. Mr. Gavin?
Thank you very much. I think it is very clear that this board has a policy of pursuing sustainable initiatives. I think we've said that time and again, we've shown that with our actions time and again. The reason I brought up this amendment, the reason I support this amendment, is not because I'm sitting here and saying there is a cost, and if it's not profitable, we don't pursue sustainability. That is not what's going on here. What's going on here is, the memo that we received from staff shows that this vehicle does essentially nothing whatsoever for the environment. This vehicle drives seven, it's not that it's the worst-case scenario, it's the most likely scenario, according to our staff. That's what they've said time and again, that this vehicle will maybe drive 1,700 miles a year. We're not going to swap it out, we're not going to do it. They've looked at opportunities to drive, where you could drive this the most possible miles, and where this vehicle would be driven is 1,700 miles a year, which is about 120-something miles a month, which barely has, frankly, any impact. It's not zero impact, and I recognize it's not zero impact, but it is a very, very low impact. On the, on the flip side is, we're not bringing in a new ICE vehicle, a new combustion engine vehicle into our, into our fleet. It's one that we are converting from something already in our fleet, which actually, in and of itself, has some environmental benefit of continuing to use something. Obviously, it's countered by the use of, you know, the greenhouse gases it emits. And if this vehicle were truly driving 3,000, 5,000, 10,000 miles a year, that's one thing. That's not what's happening here. That's not the fact of what's happening here. And I think is, in addition to having this policy of supporting sustainable initiatives, we also have a policy on this board, and a way of working on this board, of making rational decisions, and not making a decision just because it's something that we wish would happen, and we all say, "Sustainable initiatives, let's do it," period, end of story, because sustainable is attached, the word sustainable is attached to it. The, the social cost of carbon is not a perfect number, but it's a number, it's some measurement that's out there that says, if we are, you know, taking an initiative, we have to figure into the fact, we have to figure into the equation that there is a cost beyond the financial cost, which is the sustainability cost, the cost to our environment, and that number is out there, that's put out by experts. It's not clear what is it, what it is. It's 500, it's 15, or 50, 150, somewhere in that ballpark. This initiative, because of how little this car is actually going to be driven, put the social cost of carbon of doing this at, I forget what it was, six to 10 times what the experts say is the cost of doing, of an initiative like this. It just made no sense, not only from a financial standpoint, and it's a small dollar value, you're right, we're not talking huge dollar values, but from a sustainability standpoint, this initiative made no sense whatsoever, not only financially, but from a sustainability standpoint. There are, we got a wonderful sustainability plan that had initiative after initiative after initiative, and we do have a big surplus in our budget, and if we wanted to spend it, I would love to see us spend it on something that actually has an impact on our environment, and is a great sustainability initiative, whether it's composting, whether it's, you know, one of the myriad of solutions in that plan. This is one that has no impact whatsoever, and as much as it's small dollars, and as much as it's, oh, it's only $6,000, it is not a rational decision, it's not a well-thought-out decision, it's not a decision that has any impact whatsoever. And I think not, we can't just, as this board, as much as we all want to push sustainability initiatives, and I know that everyone on this board, including myself, wants to do that, it's not, it has the word sustainability, so we're going to do it no matter what. This decision is not the right decision, as big or as small as it is. There's nothing in the memo that we received from staff that says it is. And therefore, to me, you know, purchasing this vehicle, and bringing in a new vehicle into our fleet, makes no sense whatsoever, and I just can't support doing that, which is why I support having this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whelan?
Thank you, Vice President Kramer. I think pertently, I agreed wholeheartedly with Commissioner Gavin at the start of this conversation, upon reading the staff memo we received. I actually completely agree with everything you said about the staff memo. And in fact, I think I was one of the ones who raised, not some of the hard-hitting points, but some of the harsh points about why this didn't make sense when we started this conversation with staff. But that's not the end of the story. That is the beginning of the story. And just because the written memo only goes so far, and doesn't answer some of the questions, or doesn't anticipate some of the questions that we had, does not mean that's the end of the story. This is a car which, for the next year, will likely only drive 1,700 miles. However, staff was explicitly clear, that's simply because in this next year, that is the particular township car that is up for replacement. In future years, other cars will be up for replacement, and this electric vehicle will be, can be, and will be reprioritized into those additional roles for additional driving. So, I think, while I completely agree and wholeheartedly supported Commissioner Gavin's point and position at the beginning of the meeting, I think we had a very lengthy discussion in which staff came back, and I think, as I commented to Paloma, every time I have a question, or something occurs to me, because I'm such a neophyte in this area, she's already thought about it, she's already given it an analysis, and it is a disservice to staff and their recommendation to second-guess that, simply because that information wasn't necessarily put into the memo which was turned out. And it's too bad it wasn't, because I think their explanation to us all was extremely thoughtful and warranted this. So, while I have done it about face since the, you know, my original thought, I think that staff has made it, made this clear, that we should support Commissioner Courtney, support the staff decision and recommendation, and deny this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Whelan. Any other commissioners? Mr. Zellout?
Thanks, Vice President Kramer. A year ago, we had a very close vote. Two weeks ago, we had a very close vote. We don't have a policy that says, "Buy EV vehicles no matter what." We have a, an initiative that says, "Public works, please look at EV vehicles that make sense for this township." We had a very rigorous analysis provided by staff, much better analysis than was provided a year ago. It just reached, it reached a conclusion that I don't agree with. It reached a conclusion that the green premium is three times the cost of retrofitting the vehicle we already own. It says the green premium is 200%. We haven't debated premiums. We don't accept any premium. I think 200% is too high a premium. So, that's a debate we're having two weeks ago, we're having tonight, and we're going to have in the future, because we haven't set a policy on green premium, nor do I think we should. We should look at it on a case-by-case basis. In this case, the green premium, for me, is too high, it doesn't make sense. And this isn't about profit, I'm not sure why that word's being used, this is about the rigorous analysis that shows there's a very high green premium for purchasing an EV. If there's nothing else in this township, we are very careful stewards of taxpayer funds, and we take the time to analyze our decisions. We have, we have placed demands on our We have placed demands on our staff to do rigorous analysis, no matter what the issue. And we aren't casual about how we do things. And so whether it's $6,000 or $6 million, we're doing the appropriate analysis. And in this case, it doesn't support a second EV. Thank you.
Commissioner Zella?
Commissioner Kramer? Two points. Number one, in discussions with Paloma, she's made it clear that we likely will get some grants to offset the cost of this vehicle. They're not guaranteed, but we've gotten grants for every vehicle that we've applied for up until now. So likely, the $6,000 cost will be substantially less than that. And the second thing is that, you know, not every sustainability initiative that people undertake on a personal level, or the township is going to take, is necessarily going to save money. We have entered into, a few years back, a guaranteed energy savings contract that I think I calculated at the time was going to save a couple million dollars over time. And that couple million dollars is money that we can reinvest in other sustainability initiatives. We've got another electric vehicle that we're going to be -- is going to -- we're going to have a profit on it. And we can take that profit that we're making on the other vehicle and invest it in this vehicle and average them out. We're going to be doing solar projects. Those solar projects are going to save us money. And we shouldn't just be using that to, you know, pad our budget or to fill a gap in our budget. All of these things that we're doing, we should be reinvesting. And investing in the future of our community, and investing in the future of our country, and in the future for our children and grandchildren.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Any other Commissioner comment? Okay. Any public comment? No, we don't do public comment. Yep. I knew that. Just testing. Yeah. All right. So with that, I think I'll review the amendment again. We're voting to consider for approval amending the 2024 Equipment Fund Asset Replacement Purchases List by removing the purchase of a new electric vehicle to replace vehicle number 4,004 and instead replacing vehicle 4,004 with the 2021 Ford Explorer SUV being retired from the police fleet. All in favor?
With the amendment? This is to remove?
This is to remove -- remove the electric vehicle.
To amend the original list.
To amend the original list, yes. And remove the electric vehicle. All those in favor of removing it? One, two, three. Okay. All opposed? Any -- one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Abstain, one abstention. Yeah? One abstention?
Abstain.
Rick.
I have my head on it.
Rick. The motion fails. Okay. So now, do we have to do anything else with this? Okay. All right, moving on. Thank you. Moving on to a public hearing and adoption of ordinance Chapter A180, Historic Resource Inventory Cleanup Amendments, on page 52. And with that, I will open the public hearing and turn things over to Greg Pritchard.
Thank you. Good evening. Yes, this is an ordinance amendment that you had considered back in November. It's been to the Historical Commission, the Planning Commission. And I did give a presentation back at the initial authorization of the hearing, but I'd be glad to go over any details about it or answer any questions you might have.
All right. Any questions? No? No questions for Greg? Okay. I suppose then we open to the public? Did you have anything? Josh, yeah? Okay. Any public comment?
Okay.
Am I supposed to do something else? Is that simple?
Close the hearing. You're right. Close the hearing.
Yeah, close the hearing. All right. Anybody online, Shodi?
No.
Okay. All right. I'll close the hearing. And I will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 4287 with the following amendments to correct typographical errors. Do I have to read all this? Section 1. Yeah?
The true practice.
V1036, the new address should be changed from 1012 Spring Mill Road to 1300 Mount Pleasant Road. Section 3, the ID number of East Athens Avenue condo common area should be changed from AR179 to AR180. That's it. All right. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bernhardt, thank you. All in favor?
This one is a roll call.
Roll call vote. See, what do I know? Okay.
Still testing.
For the adoption of ordinance 4287, Mr. Bernhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Churchill?
Aye.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Ms. Epstein?
Aye.
Mr. Gaveran?
Aye.
Ms. S. Kramer?
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Woodruff?
Aye.
Mr. Zella?
Aye.
The ordinance is duly adopted. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Unfinished business portion of the meeting, is there any unfinished business to come before the board?
Yes.
No? Okay. Any new business to come before the board? Commissioner Courtney?
I have an announcement. Hopefully, LMTV has the Go for the Green Awards slide, maybe?
Yes. There it is.
There it is. Okay. So, the Go for the Green Awards recognize people in Lower Merion and organizations, institutions in Lower Merion who make great contributions to environmental sustainability. We are now accepting nominations. And if you know of a person or institution or a group that has made a great contribution in the past year, on our website, lowermerion.org/goforgreen, you can submit a nomination.
Thank you, Commissioner Courtney. Any other new business? All right. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.